Milton, Paul Thompson, Festerson, Gurnat. Mr. President.
Would everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance or remain standing for our invocation today by Council member Frank Thompson.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President, I usually give a prayer, but I would love you to have your special permission to do something different if that's all right with you, sir?
I'm fine with whatever you want to do, as long as it doesn't include Buckeyes attending.
In light, in light of the Buckeyes playing the Huskers.[43.12][43.12](laughter) I have written a poem, and I'd like to read that poem to you, and you have to use your imagination. You have to imagine that this is a wireless mic, okay?
All right.
All right, and the name of the poem is "An Ode to the Council President."[65.61][65.61](laughter)
Like a red.
And it goes like this: As you travel along in the friendly skies between Nebraska and Ohio to support your Buckeyes, may the day come when you finally realize that you've got two corn cobs stuck dead in your eyes.[87.25][87.25](laughter) Oh, I know that they say you're talented and wise. I know that a Husker win is hard for you to conceptualize. Jump back, Trick. Stop hating on us Nebraska guys. Everybody knows you're really a Cornhusker in disguise. Oh, what a difference one season can make. Can't wait to see Tommy shake and bake. Yeah, I know your team has a lot of skills, but this week, I predict Urban Meyer will lose his wheels. As you partake your journey, may your skies be gray. I see your lips are quivering, but I don't hear a word you say.[131.31][131.31](laughter) Hey, B Money, what'd it be like? Yo, G, what's up? What is a Buckeye? Is it a vegetable or nut?[140.01][140.01](laughter) At last, it's time for me to take my seat. The game that took place in 2012 won't repeat, and when the game is done, I'll collect my prize. I'll take some fries to go along with my order of roasted Buckeyes.[160.72][160.72](laughter)
I'm gonna take my leave now.
Boo, picking on you.
And I signed it for you.
Why, why, thank you.
I gotta get my PhD.
City Clerk's suicide publication, the Daily Record, the official newspaper, on October 28th. Notice for a pre-council, regular city council meeting November 1st, 2016. A current copy of the Opening Meetings Act posting in white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the meeting of, this meeting of Omaha City Council. The council thanks you for joining us today. As a courtesy to those in attendance, would you please turn off or mute or any cellphone devices? Mercifully, Mr. Clerk.
Did you want to bring something?
Yeah, if we could bring up, if it's okay with my colleagues, we bring up item 37. We have, please, someone has to leave fairly quick.
Okay. Under liquor, item number 37 is Tobacco Hut, number 196206 Ames Avenue, package liquor license to application, new location. You would note that it does not comply to the church rule. You have communications from the Daystar Ministry, Christian Center. You have communications from the Ames Benson Neighborhood Association, both opposing. Communications with the New Star, New Rising Star Missionary Baptist Church opposing, and you have communications from the clerk.
First of all, I'd like to thank my colleagues for laying this over so we get a chance to vote for it on it. My understanding is the public hearing is continued today, so proponents, please.
Mr. President, Mike Kelly, 7134 Pacific, and I promise not to bring up the Cubs in Cleveland.[272.02][272.02](laughter) After we've already had the Buckeyes and Huskers. I've got, if I could give the clerk here, a few, I've got a few copies. Mr. President, members of the council, again, Mike Kelly. This is a package application. Mr. John Grenison, am I correct? I want Counsel Grenison to present. This was for a package application in 62nd and Ames. John is the principal owner of the hut, which sells tobacco products and others, kind of convenience store operation. They have seven or so in the metro area. Been in business for 25 years. I think it's fair to say, pretty well regarded as a very good operator. He made an application to you folks, don't hold me to this, but two and a half, three years ago, for a license there. You guys were concerned about several issues of crime in the neighborhood and so on. Also, there was kind of a unique issue. There was, there is a, the way this is set up, he's on the north side of Ames, and his main entrance is on the north side, but he has a drive-through on the south side. And the way you come out to the east of his exit there tends to run right through, you can run right through the church property, and Popeyes next door, if you're going east, you get to the closest curb cut. There's also one in the west, but you'll see their traffic doesn't use that. The little green area is what I proposed. He came to me and said, "How could we get a license there?" And I had just seen the council kind of surprisingly grant or recommend approval of licenses since the time he'd been denied, and so I thought, "Well, maybe it is time we take another look there." Fundamental fairness, I think, probably requires you get the same treatment. So, again, I thought, at least at the commission level, although I didn't represent him, I did observe the hearing, I did, I thought that the traffic was the, was the primary issue, maybe the deciding issue, although the other issues are certainly a factor. So, we went to an engineer, and we looked at trying to create a, you know, a tongue or a panhandle, some, a long concrete deal, which sounds very easy, but of course, nothing is easy. And we had to go to an engineer. I went, talked to the city, city folks. They gave me, have a preliminary approval. Not saying they've approved it because they haven't considered it. They did have us draw plans. They said, "You will need a Board of Appeals waiver to do this, but we don't have a problem with what you're doing." So I would expect that's attainable. And anyway, so the idea would be, if you look at your little diagram there, to take the traffic and, and when they come out going to the east through the drive-through, which they won't be getting liquor there, by the way, that, but, but any traffic that comes that way, we will redirect them forcibly through the, through the concrete, and then with signs and arrows and so on, that will explicitly direct them to the west side of the property, where then they also have a curb cut there, perfectly okay to take it east, to go east. And that should relieve 99% of the traffic issue to the church and the Popeyes, because those people in a car, it can't be 30 seconds, I didn't time it, but it can't take 30 seconds longer. So, and it's certainly easier, because you're not going through church or Popeyes. So I think that will solve that problem. Also, we're aware of the, of the crime in the neighborhood. They've had issues. They've been robbed several times, and so they, he's taken the unique step of installing, and they're installing it this week, a security system, which some of the banks have gone to, of you have to be approved to get in, kind of like, my dad took me a few places in Omaha where you'd get in that way years ago. You know, you had, they had to know you, put it that way, and they would buzz you in. So, we're now talking about the same operation there, which I think will help security. And he does, he will shut down at midnight, maybe 1 o'clock Friday, Saturday, but he's not going until 2, because that's not what he wants. I think last time he was here, they gave you 2,000 or 3,000 names. Just in the week since we had the continuance, we got 875 signatures of customers, and they're all, almost all local. So I think a lot of the neighborhood, we certainly understand there's a church and some other opposition, but we think a lot of the folks want it. Again, so he's taking care of, he's doing security measures. He's, he's a good operator. I think last time, I think, I believe the council voted 6 to 1, if I remember, was pretty split, and I think it was time, since you've added a couple more licenses out there, or at least renewed one and added a new one, that maybe he ought to get fair treatment here, equal treatment. So with that, we're open for any questions, and we would, we'd appreciate your support.
Thank you.
And time for rebuttal, 11:50.
Yes, thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard?
Go ahead.
You can go first.
Hello, I'm Captain Marcia West of the Northwest Precinct, Omaha Police, and part of the 6206 Ames Street is in my precinct. And as Mr. Kelly mentioned, this location has had several robberies. They've had seven since October of 2015. And what I have found from talking with investigation detectives, the lieutenant in the robbery unit, Lieutenant Henchy and Sergeant Hornoff, who's also tasked with investigating all robberies, they found that, that even though that the owner has approximately 36 cameras in the store, the three main ones around the register are motion activated, and the only thing they've captured is a hand or a foot, and that really doesn't help in investigations. And some of the other pictures that they have captured in the store, some of the cameras are obstructed, the views obstructed, from capturing the suspect. Therefore, none of the robberies that I've mentioned, the last seven, have been solved, because the pictures aren't good enough to catch them. And the other issue that we have is the street on 62nd Street, which is the one directly to the east, the suspect runs to the north each time, and it's a darkened street, and with no streetlights, and I believe it's considered unincorporated, and so it just makes it very easy for, you know, robbery suspect to flee that direction. And we were informed about the new buzzer system at the door, which is a great improvement, but still, just like any of the banks, when someone could come up to the door unmasked, be buzzed in, hold the door for the masked gunman robber to come in and to rob the store. I mean, but it does, and he's talked about putting the camera right there, so that would help, and hopefully would discourage some, but I think there's still a lot of work that needs to be done to make it a safer establishment for the customers and also the employees. I've been told that there's, he has a very good manager who's been very cooperative and wants to improve conditions for the employees, but just some of those changes haven't been made yet. And so we'd like to see that. Of course, I've been in contact, people from the Rising Star Church and the other churches nearby have both contacted me with their concerns. And just in the past few months, we have had an increase of shots fired and some gang violence. Of course, it has nothing to do with the business, but just in that area. And also, there are already five liquor permits in the close proximity of that area, and I don't have the dates when those were granted, but that's just my understanding. And so we are, officers always give the area special attention, but it would, would be nice not to have all the robberies at that one location.
Thank you, Captain. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Opponents?
Pamela Duncan, Ames Benson Neighborhood Association. We've been down here before. Two years ago, we've been out to the Liquor Commission also two years ago, and so this is the second time our neighborhood is protesting the issuance of a package liquor license for the Tobacco Hut at 6206 Ames. Having been through this, in 2014, the churches didn't want it, the neighbors didn't want it, the Omaha City Council denied it, and the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission denied it. So why are we having to go through this again? Nothing's changed in the neighborhood since 2014, other than the Tobacco Hut is now showing a pattern of robberies, which is the same pattern a lot of convenience stores such as Quick Trip at 72nd and Ames and Quick Shop, a little, little farther north on 72nd, have. We were worried then, and we're, are more worried now, if a liquor license was granted. The World Herald article on Wednesday, June 8th, liquor license was granted to the Asian Family Supermarket at 59th and Ames, and why we agree that a grocery store would not attract the loitering crowds that are sometimes associated with convenience or liquor stores. That was a statement that Mr. Kelly made at that time. So he is acknowledging, possibly, that convenience or liquor stores have issues with robberies and stuff like that. And that 59th and Ames area now has four liquor outlets right there in close proximity, and those neighbors and those churches didn't want that also. And like I say, we've got Quick Trip at 72nd and Ames, and we've got Tobacco Hut has an outlet close, close by in the Benson Shopping Area. It suffers from robberies also. We're still looking for some positive, family-friendly development along Ames Avenue between 60th and 66 Streets, for decades, actually. My doctor wants me to get more exercise and go walking, and she, she asked me, "Well, where do you live?" And I said, "63rd and Ames," and pause, then she said, "Go to the Westroads." Always hearing about these walkable neighborhoods. We don't have a walkable neighborhood, so please help our neighborhood by again denying this liquor license. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, the proponents wish in rebuttal time.
Thank you, Mr. President, again, Mike Kelly, 7134 Pacific. Couple things. He tells me that the officers did talk to him about the cameras and their order, and you can certainly make that a condition of the license. And I want to make it clear, he's already spent $10,000 on engineering, because we understand that's, you know, nothing set in stone, but we do expect you to make that contingent, that, you know, the traffic deal contingent. You can make the cameras contingent if you want to. He's already done that. And I would have to tell you that, I mean, I don't think, it's, it's hard to blame him for, this is a commercial area, and it's just a problem we suffer from, and those, those are systemic issues that have nothing to do with liquor. So, again, the type of place, he also sells groceries, so I think it's kind of hard to determine which is more grocery, you know, the other one was the Asian folks, and I represented them at the commission. That certainly, that wasn't a high V, you know, so they're pretty close to convenience stores, too. So, he's done what he's supposed to do. He's totally committed, and the officer, and thank her for that, she said they've been very cooperative in doing all the things they're supposed to do, and will continue to do, and have already ordered the cameras, just haven't got them in yet. But you could make that a contingent. I think that with the addition of this traffic issue here, I think we're going to improve the system. So allowing him, giving him the resources to spend that money is going to be an improvement to the area. And there are hundreds of customers who agree with that. So the neighborhood is divided. Maybe some of the leadership folks are against it, but the rank-and-file neighbors, the silent majority, if you will, I think are pretty much for this, clearly for this. So I think, I've got an applicant here who's very, very well qualified, and has demonstrated it throughout 25 years, and has good stores, mostly in lesser economic areas, and he's doing, he's doing a great job of that. And he works, he works his tail off. So I would, again, we're here for any questions, and I would again urge you to, to recommend to the commission that you grant this license.
Thank you. Public hearing is closed. Ms. Milton.
Yeah, I was wondering if Mr. Acosta Trejo is here?
He is.
Will Acosta Trejo, Assistant City Attorney.
I have a question in regards to the fact that it does not comply with the church rule. What are the implications for that if, if we were to approve that? Wouldn't we have to amend the application?
Well, that is by statute, so there would have to be a hearing at the Liquor Control Commission level. So despite what happens here, if that is found to be 150 feet as it's laid out in the statute, it would have to require a hearing at the Liquor Control Commission.
And what, what does that entail? That gives the church the opportunity to object?
Correct.
And the church that's right next door at 6118, I believe we have received objections. Have we received objections from that church? I know we've received objections from multiple churches. I just want to confirm that that was one of them.
Yes. Mr. Clerk?
Buster Brown, City Clerk, yes, we have received an objection from the Baptist Church, which is the close one.
And so, the other liquor licenses, to your knowledge, that were passed, because I know there is a mention of treating the businesses fairly, which is always a concern of mine, when we just pick and choose who we're going to give a liquor license to. But were they within 100, to your knowledge, were they within 150 feet of a church and there was objections by the church?
That I could not tell you. I don't know. I know that there's five packaged liquor licenses within one mile of this location. Their distances to churches, I, I'm not familiar with.
Okay. So you don't recall that coming up before?
I know that it has come up before in the city council, and it has been taken up at the Liquor Control Commission.
And so I guess, so at this point in time, do, does the city council, I know, we always talk about that, but is that something that the city council considers when they're trying to make their decision on whether to recommend a business?
Well, it is a statute, so to the effect that the city council is being asked to make a determination to either approve or deny, that's something that you should definitely consider.
And so if we were to actually recommend this, wouldn't we be recommending that a
You would be recommending something?
A violation of a statute?
That would be, that's correct, and I do actually believe there may even be a Omaha liquor rule
There is.
That says almost the identical thing, so you'd have to also suspend that rule.
And that, that's what I recall. We would actually have to suspend the rule in order to recommend it today.
Correct.
And we would have to suspend it over the objection of the church that we've received. Is that correct, Mr. Brown?
Buster Brown, City Clerk, I believe there used to, we had a, the wording that we, we have used in the past, that, that we recommended, I'll have to see if I can find that, but yes, there is something that we could do, if you wish to grant it.
I believe that's rule number seven.
There it is.
Here comes Carmen to save us all.[1318.58][1318.58](laughter)
It would be motion to adopt if the church located within 150 feet does not object at a hearing before the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission pursuant to the Nebraska statutes. But I think that statute has now been changed, so I'm not sure that necessarily applies.
And, and it looks like, Mr. Kelly, I think it's, it looks like he made, do you mind, Mr.?
If I, if I could, again, Mike Kelly, for the record, what changed is the legislature, there used to be 150-foot prohibition against a license similar to a school. The legislature said that prohibition no longer applies. However, if, if the, there was an objection, the church is entitled to a hearing at the Liquor Control Commission. That's what's changed. There's nothing to prohibit you from recommending yea or nay.
Okay.
So that doesn't, that's, that's strictly an issue that's now left in their hands. The church would be part of neighborhood objection and any other legitimate objection that, that you can consider.
So the church is now entitled to a hearing in front of the liquor commission?
They're entitled, as a matter of law, if they object. And we conceded that they would object. We've always said at the beginning, we understand they'll be opposed. They were opposed last time, we expected them to be opposed this time.
Okay. Thank you very much. And if I could call Mr. Acosta Trejo back up?
Will Acosta Trejo, Assistant City Attorney.
And, Mr. Acosta Trejo, we, were to deny this, there was, there was some mention about fair treatment of businesses. To your knowledge, have the other businesses have, have had as many robberies in just the last year and a half as this one?
To my knowledge, no.
And is it your opinion that we, we would be able to, are there to be any problems with the denial in regards to that? If you, because it's my understanding that, at least since I've been on the council for the last three years, we've only approved two. And one was for an Asian grocery, and one was just a renewal of a liquor license. So we haven't passed any new liquor licenses, other than the Asian grocery. Is that right?
In, on this Ames corridor that we're discussing, I do not believe we have approved. I think the furthest one is the Megamart over on, I want to say 72nd, just south of Ames.
Okay.
But I could be wrong.
Okay. Thank you very much. I have no further questions.
I do believe the OPD had the robbery reports to submit to the city council as well, and she can do that at this time.
I'd ask Captain West if you could submit those to the council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Dr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Kelly?
Mike Kelly, for the record.
For the record, and for those who are watching via TV, could you put a visual up in terms of the change for traffic flow? What it used to be versus what you're proposing?
Okay, I don't know how well we can see this, but
You can blow it up a little bit.
The, the
Hold up. Could you blow that up a little bit and adjust?
Right here, right here is the traffic. If you come in, if you're going westbound on Ames, you turn right, and you come right in here, and then you would go around to the drive-through. And again, remember, this is all, there is no liquor there now. So you go through there. And then when people come out, if they want to go east, they have to go down to the following street, which must be North 61st, and then you, the easiest way is, instead of going way around, you just go right through, right through, right through this, thank you, right through this parking lot, proceed through the Popeyes lot, and then you turn right, then there's a curb cut, so you can go east on Ames. What we're proposing is you put, as they say, a tongue or panhandle, whatever you want to call this, concrete here, which will force traffic, as they come through the drive-through, to then basically go north and then west. It wouldn't be impossible to come back around, and I'm sure there'll be, some idiot will do it, but most people will not do that. Most people will follow what the directions are, and will go out west, and once they get used to it, it's going to be just as easy, maybe easier. So that's what we're proposing. And again, he's already spent $10,000 on engineering to prove, you know, I mean, that's why we're not afraid of making that a condition of the license. And that will, that will improve the traffic there, whatever happens.
Two questions. The size of the car, are we looking at one lane there or two lanes? Can you get two cars through there or one?
It's basically one, basically one lane.
Okay, so if they do
Like one and a half. It's a big one lane, but it's one lane.
If they do come up and then try to make that U-turn, they might run into cars coming north. Right?
U-turn where? In the parking lot or?
Yeah, parking lot there. So you come around the building.
And again, our plan would be to have, whatever the public works requires, but we'll have, we'll have, the engineers already suggested, we'll have signs here and then flashing light here pointing them to the west as they come around the building. So, and everybody else will obviously see, that's the easy way to go, too.
So you've got signs pointing left or west?
We will, yeah.
And you really only have room for one car to get through on the east side, so
Right, there'd be no way to go out, if there were a car coming in, there'd be no way to go out.
Okay.
But we're basically making an entrance only.
Okay.
As a practical matter.
Okay.
We're not using a gate or anything.
The second question has to do with, I think you made a comment, I think you said one guy was more guilty for robbing the place than
We did happen to have one individual person that would continue to rob it, yeah.
How many times?
Well, I was told, three or four, three or four times.
Okay. Was he ever
We had, you know, I don't know, was he ever caught? We don't know. We don't know for sure. But, but we did, we did know it was the same person. We could tell by his mannerisms and so on.
Okay. And then you said that you have a new system of buzzing them in?
Just being installed, yes.
So everybody has to be buzzed in?
Right. And that will, and the police had great suggestions that we're doing them. We're going to do the, the camera system, so we'll be able to see who's outside. If there's more than one person, then we might not let them in, you know. They're going to have to identify themselves some way.
Thank you. Thank you. Let me, let me just make a couple of comments, and then I'm going to, first of all, I would encourage my council members to vote with conscience. I, for one, can't support this, and I can't support it for several reasons. One, when we talked before, I, you know, when it first came up, I talked about the location and how, how difficult of a location that was, and how difficult of a location that was going to be, and the concerns that
that was going to be, and the concerns that the neighbors had. It kind of bothers me a little bit that we haven't reached out and talked to the neighbors yet, or had a meeting with the neighbors. That's, that's an issue that, that, first of all, I'm not comfortable with, so at this point in time, I can't support it. I do agree with and, and like the, the changes that are going to be made, but initially, when we first talked about this issue, I talked about the fact that that location has been a problem location for a while. It has nothing to do with you. As a matter of fact, you have a hut on, in, in Benson that I frequent regularly myself. So it's not about the operator, it's about the location. It's about the fact that we have neighbors that have had these kinds of concerns for a number of years. They continue to be opposed to it. It would have been helpful, I think, if you had had an opportunity to, or if you had taken the opportunity to talk to them. So at this point in time, I, this is not a, you know, and Councilmember Festerson and I kind of share this area together. But at this point in time, I, I can't be supportive of it for those reasons. But let me say to the neighbors as well, I want us to, I, I want, I want to do what the neighbors feel like needs to occur. I, I do feel like anybody that's going to come into that area that is going to, that wants to establish a liquor license ought to really sit down and talk with the Neighborhood Association. And so at this point, I, I still can't do it, but I, I still can't support it at this point. I would suggest, though, that if you're going to continue to stay there, that you try and establish a relationship with the neighbors so that they're, so that there's a clear understanding of what their concerns are and what, and what you can do to maybe help alleviate some of the concerns that they have. But at this point in time, I can't support it.
Is there a motion? Or is there more discussion?
I'm going to go ahead and move your approval.
Moving and seconded to approve item 37, no further lights, roll call.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Once you've had more meetings with the neighbors, I would consider considering a new business. At this point in time, based on lack of contact with the neighbors and this police report on the issue, we're going to go ahead. The number robbery, you're going to have to go ahead and say no until we've approved it and have the new cameras presented.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
No.
Jerem? Or Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
No.
It fails on a three to three vote. We now need a motion to deny.
Motion to deny.
Second, roll call.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls? Thompson?
No.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
No.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It also fails on a three to three vote, so it will go down as no recommendation.
We can go back to the regular agenda, please, Mr. Parker.
I'll let Mr. Jerem pass on a potential conflict of interest. issue of general obligation refunding bonds in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $95,300,000, to be termed for identification purposes, various purposes, and refunding bond series 2016-A and general obligation refunding bond series 2016-B.
Public hearing on agenda, item number five is today, proponents please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
The zoning ordinance on final reg and planning board attachments, item number six, is ordinance to rezone property located at 1103, 1105 South 13th Street from Heavy Industrial District to Neighborhood Business District. Property is also located within an ACI-150 overlay district, A Planning, Board and Plan Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda, item number six is today, proponents please.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. Sean Kelly, 7134 Pacific Street, appearing on behalf of the applicant, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
Approve.
Moving and seconded to approve item six, no further lights, roll call.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Six is passed, seven to zero. Item number seven, ordinance to rezone property located at 1419, 1423, 1425, South 13th Street from General Industrial District to Neighborhood Business District. Property is also located within an existing ACI-150 overlay district, A Planning, Board and Plan Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda, item number seven is today, proponents please.
Yes, Sean Kelly, 7134 Pacific Street, here for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Seven is passed, seven to zero. Item number eight, ordinance to rezone property located at 2018 Poplin Avenue from General Industrial District to R5 Urban Family Residential District, A Planning, Board and Plan Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda, item number eight is today, proponents please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving and seconded to approve item nine, no lights, roll call.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Eleven is passed, seven to zero. Item number twelve, ordinance to amend the boundaries of the major commercial corridor overlay district to incorporate in that district property located at 9801 West Center Road, A Planning, Board and Plan Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda, item number twelve is today, proponents please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Michael Coyle, 500 Energy Plaza, appearing on behalf of the Westside Community Schools. I'm here to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving and seconded to approve item twelve, no lights, roll call.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Thirteen is passed, seven to zero. Item number eleven, ordinance to rezone property located at 3827 South 42nd Street from Railroad District to Heavy Industrial District, A Planning, Board and Plan Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda, item number eleven is today, proponents please.
Good afternoon, Councilman Patrick Sullivan, 1246 Golden Gate Drive, for the applicant, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving and seconded to approve item eleven, no further lights, roll call.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Eleven is passed, seven to zero. Item number twelve, ordinance to amend the boundaries of the major commercial corridor overlay district to incorporate in that district property located at 9801 West Center Road, A Planning, Board and Plan Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda, item number twelve is today, proponents please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Michael Coyle, 500 Energy Plaza, appearing on behalf of the Westside Community Schools. I'm here to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving and seconded to approve item twelve, no lights, roll call.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Twelve is passed, seven to zero. Item number thirteen, ordinance to rezone property located at 11220 Belondo Street from Development Reserve District to R4 Single Family Residential District High Density, A Planning, Board and Plan Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda, item number thirteen is today, proponents please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving and seconded to approve item thirteen, no lights, roll call.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Eight is passed, seven to zero. Item number nine, ordinance to rezone property located east of 33rd and Emmett Street intersection from R4 35 Single Family Residential District High Density to R4 Single Family Residential District High Density, A Planning, Board and Plan Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda, item number nine is today, proponents please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving and seconded to approve item nine, no lights, roll call.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Nine is passed, seven to zero. Item number sixteen, ordinance to approve a major amendment to a mixed-use development agreement for the Lakeside Plaza, Lakeside Hills, to allow an automotive rental located at 2571 South 171st Street, to provide site development standards, A Planning, Board and Plan Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda, item number sixteen is today, proponents please.
Michael Douglas, 6144 Northwest 11th Street in Lincoln. I'm with Hertz Rental Car, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving and seconded to approve item sixteen, no lights, roll call.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Sixteen is passed, seven to zero. Item seventeen, eighteen and nineteen are one case. Seventeen is ordinance to rezone property located northwest 192nd and West Maple Road from Heraculture District to R4 Single Family Residential District Medium Density, A Planning, Board and Plan Department recommend approval. Eighteen is resolution to platent titled Indian Creek Landing Two is hereby approved, A Planning, Board and Plan Department recommend approval. And nineteen is subdivision agreement is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda, items number seventeen, eighteen and nineteen are today, proponents please.
Mr. President, members of the council, John Follenkamp, 11440 West Center Road. This is a 44-lot phase in the Indian Creek subdivision west of 192nd Street, north of Maple. Comes to you with the approval of the Planning Department and Planning Board. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving and seconded to approve items seventeen, eighteen and nineteen, no lights, roll call.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Seventeen through nineteen are passed, seven to zero. Item number twenty, ordinance to rezone property located at 4626 North 208th Street from Development Reserve District to R4 Single Family Residential District High Density. Twenty-one is ordinance to rezone property to R4 Single Family Residential High Density, A Planning, Board and Plan Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda, items numbers twenty and twenty-one are today, proponents please.
Jason Thielen, E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road, here on behalf of the applicant, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Dr. Thompson?
Mr. Thielen?
Yes.
Go ahead and say your name again.
Jason Thielen.
Have you had time to meet with any of the constituents or neighbors in that area?
There aren't a lot of, directly next to these lots. These lots are all pretty new. The home, my understanding, the developers met with the homeowners that are directly affected by the lots in which we are subdividing, as well as reducing the outlot that we used, that's for post-construction there. So I understand he has met with them, and the owners of either side are taking a proportion of the, of the outlot that we're subdividing.
Point to it and walk me through it.
So this is Outlet B. It's owned by the SID, Charleston Homes, was the developer. These two homeowners, at one time, were maintaining this and realizing that it's not their property, but wanted it to be maintained more in a residential-type fashion instead of left-natural. And this homeowner was willing to take this finger. And then the same came true here, where this was split in half and given to both sides. And we need to maintain...
Do they, do they own it now, or are they just maintaining it?
They do, they do not own it now. It is, is an outlot that's owned by the Santerre Improvement District.
Okay.
And so the agreement between the three homeowners, as well as the SID and the city, we need to maintain access to this outlot. And so we are splitting this in half, and then this, all of this goes to this lot. Each one of these owners is taking half of that, maintaining an access for the city in the future for the storm sewer and PCSMP basin that's there.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Public hearing is closed, is there a motion?
Move the approval.
Okay.
Moving and seconded to approve items twenty and twenty-one, and no, no further lights, roll call.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President? Item number 22, resolution of the preliminary platent titled 32 California located southeast of 32nd California Street with a request for a waiver of lot depth along with attached conditions, zero by acceptance, and per person final platent is hereby authorized, A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 22 is today, proponents please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item 22, no lights, roll call.
Jaram, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Festerson, Gurnett. Mr. President?
Yes.
22 is adopted, seven to zero. Item 23 and 24 together, 23 is resolution of preliminary platent titled Ranch View Estates Replat 3 located southeast of 214th and Pacific Street hereby accepted and the final platent is authorized, A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval, and 24 is resolution of the platent entitled Ranch View Estates Replat 3 is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda, items numbers 23 and 24 are today, proponents please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Second, no lights, roll call.
Jaram, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Festerson, Gurnett. Mr. President?
Yes.
23 through 24 adopted, seven to zero. Pursuant City Council Rule 7H, due no meaning, being held November 15th, agenda items 25 through 29 shall be laid over three weeks to November 22nd for publication and public hearing. Item number 30, a special use permit application to allow custom manufacturing in a community commercial district property is also located within flood fringe overlay district located at 4829 South 136th Street is hereby approved, and permits and inspections is directed issue of the necessary permits, A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 30 is today, proponents please.
My name is Gary Norton with Thompson's recent owner here on behalf of the applicant, if you have any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Dr. Thompson.
Thank you. Mr. Norton? Remind me again, what are you manufacturing?
They're not manufacturing anything, basically just the use, the storage and the type of shed, it's just under the city's classification, it's considered manufacturing, they're just storing construction materials inside the building, so there is no manufacturing going on.
Thank you. Move the approval?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve item 30, no lights, roll call.
Jaram, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Festerson, Gurnett. Mr. President?
Yes.
30 is adopted, seven to zero. Liquor, item number 31, Lombardos Bistro and Bar, 13110 Birch Drive, number 100, Class C liquor license, no application, no location, is an upgrade.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 31 is today, proponents please.
Good afternoon, Rich Bar Mittler of Bar Mittler Consulting Group, appearing on behalf of the applicant and answering any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Move the approval?
Oh, Ms. Milton.
Yeah, thanks. You can come back up. Thank you, and I read, it looks like Lombardos is taking over Zerlos, I was very disappointed to see Zerlos go away, I really loved the restaurant, but when I saw your business plan, a little Italian bistro, the little flair.
Right, and it's going to be a little more casual, Zerlos, and there was a concept in before that, they were a little more upscale, and it's going to be Italian-themed but a little more, little more casual on the appearance side and the food side, but it is Italian in full service, and we've been in talks quite a bit with the previous owner and trying to carry on the, carry on the tradition there as much as possible.
Well, that's good, I know a group of ladies whose tradition is to meet there once a month for their ladies' afternoon.
Okay.
And one of them I know watches our city council meetings, so hopefully they'll carry on their tradition.
Where's the camera?
So, we're really, I was really pleased to see a business come in so quickly after Zerlos and a restaurant like yours, so I'm looking forward to apparently bringing the family because it's casual, and so that'll be...
Correct.
That'll be welcome.
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you with that, with that, I'll second Councilman Thompson's motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item 31, no further lights, roll call.
Jaram, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Festerson, Gurnett. Mr. President?
Yes.
31 is adopted, seven to zero. Item number 32 is Gino's Bar and Grill, 3821 North 167th Court, Suites 160 and 165, Class I liquor license, no application, no location.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 32 is today, proponents please.
Hi, I'm Stacy Mead, the applicant, I'm here to answer any questions for you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Move the approval?
Moved and seconded to approve item 32, no lights, roll call.
Jaram, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Festerson, Gurnett. Mr. President?
Yes.
32 is adopted, seven to zero. Item number 33 is a diner, 409 South 12th Street, request permission for an addition to their present Class I liquor license of an outdoor deck area to the north, we have communications from the applicant to amend to include a larger area for their outdoor area, 67 by 48 to the north and the west, and the communications from the permits inspectors is that they needed to have their proper permits.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 33 is today, proponents please.
My name's Ken Schroder with the diner.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now, who has the best biscuits?
Some gravy in town?
Well, you know, we're right up there. I'll be humble, how's that?
It's nice little plaque.
But the best biscuits in town are right there, homemade every day.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Salute.
That's on the amendment?
Yeah, on the amendment, yes.
Second. Moved and seconded to move the amendment on item number 33, no more lights, roll call.
Jaram, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Festerson, Gurnett. Mr. President?
Yes. Roll call.
Jaram, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Festerson, Gurnett. Mr. President?
Yes.
33 is adopted as amended with the proper permits, seven to zero. Item number 34, Buffalo Wild Wings Grill and Bar, number 27 at 4287 North 144th Street, request permission to appoint Nicole Bart...
Bartini.
Manager.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 34 is today, proponents please.
I'm Nicole Bartini, here as the applicant.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item 34, no lights, roll call.
Jaram, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Festerson, Gurnett. Mr. President?
Yes.
34 is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item number 35, JD Circle Inn, 3602 South 31st Street, request permission to appoint Kelly Hurley, manager.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 35 is today, proponents please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item 35, no lights, roll call.
Jaram, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Festerson, Gurnett. Mr. President?
Yes.
35 is approved, seven to zero. Item number 36 is Pitch Coal Fire Pizzeria, 5021 Underwood Avenue, request permission to appoint Marcus Herbert, manager.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 36 is today, proponents please.
Marcus Hebert, the applicant, here to answer any questions you might have and give a prediction, Nebraska 27, Ohio State 21.
You should have waited until I voted first. It's been moved and seconded.
Actually, I have a question.
Oh, you have a question, Mr. Festerson.
Hi, so I'm obviously supportive of the license here, I know we recently approved also an expansion to the sidewalk, a little outdoor area, when do you anticipate doing that?
We would have liked to start this fall, but we'll probably be pushed off into, into the spring.
Okay, for the spring, that'll be a welcome addition as well.
Thank you.
Thanks.
It's been moved and seconded? Yes, it has. No further lights, oh, no further lights, roll call. Minus the prediction, no further lights, roll call.
Jaram, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Festerson, Gurnett. Mr. President?
Reluctantly, yes.
Thank you, guys.
36 is approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause an unpleasant on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed consent agenda should be taken out by city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed as otherwise provided by city council rules of order.
The public hearing, the public hearings on agenda items numbers 38 through 43 were held on October 25th, 2016. Moved and seconded to approve items 38 through 43, no further lights, roll call.
Jaram, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Festerson, Gurnett. Mr. President?
Yes.
38 through 43 are passed, seven to zero.
The public hearing on agenda items numbers 44 through 52 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve items 44 through 52, no lights, roll call.
Jaram, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Festerson, Gurnett. Mr. President?
Yes.
44 through 52 are adopted, seven to zero. Ordinance on final reading, item number 53, ordinance to amend Home Office of Code Chapter 11 by adding a new article, mobile food vendors consisting of new sections to regulate and require licensing for mobile food vendors, A is an amendment request by the administration, B is documents submitted by Mike Moylan, and C is communications opposing, and D is the amendment requested by Councilmember Festerson.
The public hearing on agenda, item number 53, were held on 9/27/16 and 10/18/16, so it's just council discussion today, Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President, and I appreciated the two-week layover last time to engage some BIDs on what was a relatively new concept that week on allowing BIDs or neighborhoods to go about a process of creating their own rules even as what's proposed here creates a baseline, and I've done that, and I had a couple of things just to clarify with Mr. Thielen along those lines and along that process, but then also the floor amendment that I want to explain here in a minute that I think will address their interests and help us move forward today. But just because there has been a lot of changes, I thought I'd just reaffirm, I guess, with Mr. Thielen, for those that have followed this, that the basic premise of the ordinance overall is still the 50-foot spacing from an entrance of a restaurant, no food trucks and diagonal parking stalls, and they could serve until 2:30 in the morning, right? Mr. Thielen?
Alan Thielen of the Law Department, yes, that's correct.
And the remedy for that is a, is a ticket, public works, police enforcement, how does that work?
The remedy would be anyone authorized by the city of Omaha to issue a ticket, could issue the ticket, for the most part, that would be the police department.
Okay. Thank you, and then a bit of conversation on the amendment which is now 53A that identifies BIDs and/or neighborhoods going about a process of creating their own system of rules should they desire, if this is passed today. So, as outlined in that amendment, it allows them to do that by applying to public works and making a case for whatever rules they may want to change, and that's what's identified in that amendment, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Now, in this section, as well as Section 11342(c)(6), it says for them to do that or to pursue that, they need to have a reasonable showing of public health or public safety concerns, and one of the questions they asked me, well, what does that mean? They were worried that was too limiting in terms of them establishing that process, should they want to have a different spacing, or should they want to address diagonal parking differently, or should they even address the closing time differently? But in our conversations, you've confirmed that they in fact could address those things, it's not precluded from the terms public safety or public health, right?
Correct, that standard affecting public health and/or public safety concerns is a relatively low standard that should be met with any permissible regulation of food trucks in this area.
Okay, thank you. And ultimately, that's a decision the council makes anyway, correctly, correct? So, any council member or four council members could make, could make those rules regardless of that particular provision.
Yes, that could be, I stated as a finding in the ordinance that the council would adopt.
Because that would be a new ordinance that comes to the council for approval or denial, right?
Yes.
Thank you. And similarly, the amendment outlines a process by which a committee established can or can or will, actually will review this ordinance every year for how it's going and how it's, if any tweaks need to be made or anything along those lines, but regardless of what that committee finds or doesn't find, the council can pursue that anyway because we're the ultimate authority via ordinance, correct?
Yes, there's nothing in this ordinance or the amendment that ties the city council's hands for future, future ordinances that the council might want to pass.
Thank you, and that satisfies those inquiries and my question about them. So, now to the floor amendment, I just want to outline that real quick and what that does. So, I would consider it a friendly amendment to the amendment of the ordinance that realizes that there are four different BIDs in our city right now, and I think two more underway are being considered, and that not all BIDs have parking meters. So, the current ordinance only addressed areas of parking meters in terms of the time limits a food truck could be there, and the current ordinance says that in areas with meters that have a two-hour maximum, a food truck can only be there for a maximum of four hours, so they could be there for two consecutive meter pluggings, you might say, for maximum of four hours, but it did not address how it would be handled in BIDs that don't have parking meters such as Dundee and Benson. So, the amendment recognizes that and says, let's, let's make this uniform to start with, and says, in areas that don't have meters but are marked two-hour maximums as Dundee and Benson are, that food trucks can also only be there for four hours maximum, so it makes that consistent amongst BIDs. And then it also has a line just establishing or reaffirming, I should say, that all food trucks must comply with current city noise ordinances, the concern being that some food trucks had very loud compressors, and that's amplified in some of these smaller business districts, so it just reaffirms that that's the case. So, that's the intention with that floor amendment, and I would go ahead and move that amendment and hope I, hope I get a second for it.
Moved and seconded to move the floor amendment?
This is D.
Amendment D. There, no lights, roll call.
Jaram, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Festerson, Gurnett. Mr. President?
Yes.
Thank you, and then I think with that, I think I'm satisfied that we've come together and found a good balance between the interests of food trucks and the quality of life that they provide, and the addition they make to our urban fabric across our city, together with the concerns that some restaurants had posed about how it could all work together and strike that right balance. So, with this floor amendment and with Amendment 53A, I'm prepared to support this today, and so I'll go ahead and move 53A as well.
No, just 53A. There are two different amendments, they both go to the original ordinance.
Okay, so, move...
53A.
Okay, moved and seconded to approve 53A, no lights, roll call.
Jaram, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Festerson, Gurnett. Mr. President?
Yes.
Now, 53 as amended.
Second. Roll call.
Jaram, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Festerson, Gurnett. Mr. President?
Yes.
53 is passed as amended, seven to zero. Ordinances on second reading and planning board attachments, item number 54, ordinance vacating 11th Street Right-Away, Lot 8, Block 221, Lot 5, Block 220, A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 54 is today, proponents please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, next item.
Ordinance on second reading, item 55, ordinance to approve the execution of the master agreement for use of public right-of-way between the city and Mobile Light, providing for Mobile Light's use of street light poles and other utility poles in the city of right-of-way for microcell wireless antennas.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 55 is today, proponents please.
Kristy Icorn on behalf of Mobility, 7824 Sycamore Drive, Lincoln, Nebraska, I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, next item.
Item 56, ordinance to approve a redevelopment tax and financing loan agreement with 3700 Dewey Street LLC, met the 3700 Dewey Tax and Financing project planned for, project site located at 3625 Dewey Avenue.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 56 is today, proponents please.
Good afternoon, Bridget Hadley, City Planning, here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, next item.
Item 57, ordinance to set the bid of Nebraska best lawn and landscape for the provision of snow removal at police facility for a period of three years.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 57 is today, proponents please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, next item.
Pursuant City Council Rule 7H, due no meaning being held November 15th, the third reading of public hearing, agenda items 58 through 66 shall be held on November 22nd, pursuant to City Council Rule 7C, the public hearing, agenda item number 67 shall be held on the second reading.
Moved and seconded to adjourn, no lights, roll call.
Jaram, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Festerson, Gurnett. Mr. President?
Yes.
Standard adjourned at 3:07 PM. No, a whole lot faster than I thought.
Yeah, doc.